We'll call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, September 14th to order. Would you rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any weekly briefing? Ginny.
Good evening. I'm Ginny Hewitt, the Director at Brooks Free Library, and I wanted to stop by and say thank you to the Town Administrator, the Selectmen, Finance Committee, and the community for the funds to reopen Mondays. This was our first open day today. After ten years, we have Mondays back, and we've had a great response from the community. People have been really excited about it. So, just so people know, our hours are Monday to Thursday at 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and Friday and Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And since it's the end, since it's the end, since it's the start of the school year, I thought I would mention that our after-school programs have started up again. We have Legos has moved from Tuesday to Monday afternoons. That's primarily attended by elementary school and some middle school students. So on Tuesdays, we have a new program called Middle School Makers, and that is part of that whole Maker space and STEM movement where the kids will be working with technology and working with their hands. On Wednesdays, we have early release movies on the days that the schools have the early release, and on the alternate Wednesdays, we have a volunteer group called Teen Library Corps where it's middle school and high schoolers work with the youth librarian on planning activities for younger kids. On Thursdays, we have the Howard Junior Theater Explorers app back, and that is where the HJT creative team comes and leads free drama and theater workshops, and that is, we use trust funds to pay for that so that it's free for the kids, and all of our programs are free, whether it's for children or adults. Either we use staff member or volunteer or trust funds to pay for it. So, I just also wanted to say thank you to the schools because we have, the kids can take the bus to the library every day from the middle school, and that's really key. It is a, I think most people know that the after-school hours when kids are unsupervised, especially the young teens, the middle school age kids are unsupervised, that's when they're most at risk. So, they're able to come to a free, safe welcoming space, and we're really concerned about that last year when the middle school moved to Chatham, but Cape Destinations, the bus company, really stepped up and they made it happen. And so, parents, I want to make sure parents know the kids can take the bus to the library. It's Bus Eight, and they need to write a note so that the school, you know, knows that they can take that bus and get off at the library. One of the things I wanted to mention, after-school, we see a lot of our Howard families, you know, students from our Howard families here, but starting last year, we saw a growing number of school choice students, so from Dennis, Yarmouth, and even Hyannis, because when you think about it, for after-school care, this saves a working parent probably an hour round trip, even for our own families, if they can pick their student up in Howard instead of at a Chatham after-school program. So, we are doing our part to keep school choice in our favor.
So Ginny, if a middle schooler takes Bus Eight and comes over to the library, and they get there, I don't know what time, 3:00 o'clock or something?
About 3:15.
Yeah. How long can they stay there before?
We're open until 7:00. So, we designed our hours, you know, years ago after the override in 2005. We had strange hours before that, and there were several days where we closed at 4:00, and we were closing the door on kids. So, one of the things actually closing on Mondays allowed us to do after that override was to be open until 7:00, and so the Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and that's been a real service of, for working people because the parents can pick up the kids on their way home from school, hopefully home from work.
And is there a designated program for these kids, or are they on their own once they get there?
They are on their own, although, you know, they're young enough that they don't know that. In other words, it's not, you know, if you, if you go to a rec department program or something, you're signed in and the kids are considered in your custodial care, and that's not the case. They can leave and go to Christie's if they want, or Main Street Market, I guess. But, you know, they're young enough that they see an adult and they think that they're, they're in charge of them. So, we do, it's up to the parents to, you know, let their kids know what they can and can't do, and they check in with the youth librarian who tells them what the kids have been up to. And so, we have these programs after-school every day. These are normal things. There's homework help and computers, and actually, we have six new computers that will be going in in the next week or two. So, there's the normal library things they can do, and then we have all these regular free activities, and, and really, it's drop-in. There's no advanced signup, so whether it's that day or they come every day, they can do that, so.
Okay, and they don't check in when they get there, so you don't really, I mean, at any point in time, you don't know who's, who's there from the middle school, for instance?
They don't. No, they don't, but, but, you know, we make the parents aware of that. You know, it becomes an issue on a, if we, if the schools are closing, and we may be closing early because of snow.
Right.
You know, so this year, we're trying to get more information. We do, when that happens, we usually call the schools and ask them to announce that, that the kids are not to come to the library because you don't, we don't want them to arrive and we're already closed or closing soon.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Anybody else?
Just on that, my daughter actually takes advantage of that, and she does take the bus, but the Montomoy does require a note to have her be able to go on that bus to go to the library. So, someone knows who's going over there, just not, not the library folks.
Just because that's how we do it. That's why it's a free service. You're not paying for individual childcare.
Sure.
But, I also, I almost forgot to mention, we are closed this Saturday for the Cranberry Festival. That's just really due to parking issues and people being blocked in and all, and.
Got it. Thank you. Anybody else for weekly briefing? Public comment and announcements, Jeremy?
Ginny kind of segued into it. Just wanted to remind everybody, this weekend is the annual Harwich Cranberry Arts and Music Festival, beginning on Saturday with the craft fair from 9:00 to 4:00, music from 12:30 to 5:00. Sunday with crafts from 9:00 to 4:00 and music from 10:00 to 5:00. And also, I want to remind or enlighten people about the parade that's returning on Sunday, which begins in Harwichport Route 28 at Freeman Street at 11:30. It'll head down Route 28 to Doane Road, up Doane Road to Mergent to South Street, and then to Sisson, where it'll go up Sisson to Main Street, and then Main Street down to Bank Street. It'll end right at the Library at Bank Street, and then bring everybody back to where it started. That starts at 11:30. It's set to wrap up at, at just about 1:00, where then the music continues. They take an hour hiatus from 12:00 to 1:00 in Harwich Center, the Cranberry Festival, the music, and then it picks back up at 1:00. So, lots of activities going on. Just to be aware, there will be some detours in that road, along that route. Our plan is to minimize them as much as possible, so as the parade goes by, we'll be opening up the traffic right afterwards, so.
And what's the weather forecast?
Beautiful.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else for public comments and announcements?
Brooke Williams, West Harwich, in reviewing actually the Chronicle and also the Selectmen's packet from last week, I noted that there was the language on the middle school, and the first option for, for the voters would be retention of the Harwich Middle School, changing the use to a different municipal use, such as a cultural center. And so, looking at the website, the Harwich's website under the Reuse Committee, I didn't find any report, recent report, that indicates why education would not be, which would be continuing use, not changing use.
Okay, Brooke, the only, the only I'll say on that is we asked Town Council to prepare a sample ballot, just so we had the structure of it.
Yes.
The Board of Selectmen, instead of having a committee, if you will, to look at this, has now had Angelo and Michael working with some, some of the staff in Town Hall, if you will.
Yes.
To develop some of these options. They will come back to us at some point in time with some, what some of these options could be. That whole dialogue will go on for the next several months, and it will be agended.
Because I do think that the education option is, is quite important. I know in our comprehensive plan, education is seen as being important to our economic development, and I think it's key than in Bridgewater State's leasing of a facility in Yarmouth. And also, I found that in Ann Arbor, Michigan, which is a community with the University of Michigan, the city there leased educational structure, and it's providing a significant amount of revenue. It's not in competition with one of their public structures, and that I would think would be an option. But the other quick comments on that also is, it mentions demolition, and we're going to be discussing later the schoolhouse, and I do feel as though if demolition is discussed, there should be an indication of what the value of that structure is, because this is a recent, a new structure, and demolishing a structure of significant value, I think is important to understand that.
And let me just say, the whole intent of the ballot question, it's an unbinding ballot question, so that we can get a sense of what people would like to do with that building. Once that ballot is voted, it doesn't have any merit, other than saying, okay, I'm making this up, 50% of the people said they wanted to pursue this option.
Right.
Anything that happens subsequent to that has to come back to a follow-on town meeting for any kind of action. So, I just ask you to stay tuned to that. It's going to go on for several months.
My final comment is, in regard to the sale, it says the cost to the town of Harwich, but the, one of the consultant for one of the housing developers indicated closing off access from, from the school, and so there may be costs to the region, to NOSIT. So, that would impact the town of Harwich and possibly the voters in Chatham having to pay for that. So, I think those are considerations.
Yep, thank you.
So, thank you for your response.
Yep, thank you. Anybody else on a public comments and announcements? Move on then to the consent agenda. Janelle?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the consent agenda as follows. Approve the minutes from June 17th, 2015, regular meeting. Approve and sign the amendment to Town of Harwich, Harwich Historical Society Agreement, to include a Elmer Kroll Barn Building as requested by Brooks Academy Museum Commission. Approve the request by Brooks Academy Museum Commission to establish a Elmer Kroll Barn Maintenance Gift Account. Approve Chapter 90 project request for resurfacing various roads in the amount of $392,645.08. Accept gifts to Harbor Demolition Beautification Fund, and accept gifts to Albro House Maintenance Gift Account.
Second.
Moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda. Any, any discussion? Here, and then we'll put it to a vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's a vote, thank you. Okay, get on to public hearings and presentations. Tonight, we start what we do every year, and that's annual meetings. All of our boards and committees, we ask them to come in and give us a look as to what their plans are for the coming year. Typically, they also give us an indication of whether they're having any issues or challenges getting members and that type of thing. So, I just want to point out that under Annual Meetings, Number Two and Number Four, the Archit, or, excuse me, Agricultural Commission, Historic District Historic Commission, both asked to be rescheduled due to conflicts, so we're honoring that request. So, the first one will be the Architectural Advisory Committee, my favorite committee because of this young lady right here. Take your time.
Well, this is the favorite meeting of ours, too. I'm Barbara Jocelyn with the Architecture Advisory Committee, and this is Liz Grove, who is my right hand, and I don't think any of the others could make it. Well, their loss. Anyway, we are coasting along. We have a very good committee. They're crackerjack at the meeting, maybe not at this one, but at the usual ones, and we know pretty much what we want. We haven't had a lot of architecture, though. We've had a lot of signs, but nobody seems to be building anything in the commercial district that we either can either approve or disapprove of. We had, so far this year, we have had 20 signs that we have reviewed, and last year, at, at the end of the year, we had 24. So, I think we're just kind of keeping the same old pace going on, and the people who apply are very nice. They listen to what we have to say. The only problem we have is people putting up signs without even asking. That's what we call clutter. But the signs we approve are all good, and the architecture would be too if we'd get some. I don't have any complaints.
We can't make that one happen, unfortunately.
I guess not. I don't have any complaints, though.
Okay, any questions from the board? Anyone?
Well, this is a happy meeting. I'd like to introduce Liz Grove.
Sure.
I'm, do you want to say anything?
No.
Oh. We're a very happy committee.
Okay.
If I could say one thing.
Get up here and use it.
Could you step up to the mic, please, just, just because we're on television?
I didn't get permission from my chairman to say anything. I just wanted to reiterate that when you're doing a temporary sign, which some people do without asking, they simply write in colored chalk on a board and put it on the sidewalk, and I think they forget that it's there, and it becomes cluttered. So, just think about how your, how the sidewalk looks and how, how your town looks, and try to keep everything neat. Maybe put a blooming barrel outside, and in the summer, when the tourists come, they'll be much more intrigued by your store, and, and probably a little bit more business will come your way.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank the rest of your committee members for us, please. We look forward to seeing you next year. Thank you. Brooks Academy Museum Commission. Jeremy gets stuck with this one.
All right. I guess last month, I got voted the short straw again to be the chair for the.
Smiling over there.
Peggy is, Peg Rose is the official secretary. Also on our committee, we have Sandy Hall and Knowles, yeah, Barry Knowles. He has, he's missed the last couple of meetings. And then we have one vacancy from, open, that's been open for about three months, from Patty Smith. So, we are looking for one other person. We've been going along good. We've had some work done on the Historical Society, Brooks Academy Museum. We've had some painting work done just recently with the Sheriff's Office. They're coming back this week to finish and do some more painting work, which they've done just about every year for, you know, the past three or so years, some touch-up paint and, and that sort of thing. We've, we find that that is the most useful amount. It costs us about $250 a year to have them come for three or four days to do the painting work, and that's been really beneficial for us. We've been working on the Kroll Barn. I'm not going to give an estimated date for completion because I learned that last year when I came to the meeting. Not to do that, but we're, we're getting there. We've got the electrician doing some final electrical work. We've got the floor, one day left to finish the floor on the inside, and then from there on, it's just punch lifts stuff with some shingling and that sort of thing, and then we'll be open as soon as the electrical is hooked up to the telephone pole.
So, Jeremy, right now, the Kroll Barn is not open to the public. Is that right?
You can peek through the door, but they've, they've had the door open, and people have been looking in on the workshop side, the, the original Kroll Workshop, which is all outfitted with, you know, some, some work benches and some odd pieces and stuff, and they've had the door open that people can look into it.
Okay.
But no, it's not open to the public for people to walk through. The main part of the barn will be, you know, probably within the next month or so, it'll be open. Our goal is by, you know, Columbus Day weekend to have it all finished, and then people will be able to tour the whole barn. We'll have exhibits going on throughout it. The right side will be showcasing the process of rebuilding the barn. The middle piece will be for workshops, and then the workshop itself. We've had a lot of interest, a lot of publicity. New York Times, Wall Street Journal, Washington Post have all come and done articles on it over the past three or four months, so that's been positive. We've had a lot of people come and, you know, wanted to peek inside, so that's also been good. Back to the Historical Society, Brooks Academy Museum Commission. We're in the process of finalizing our RFP to go out for design work for, what'd you call it, Architectural Historical Advisory, similar to that of Brooks Museum, Brooks Free Library. Based on the results that they got in their RFP, we're looking back at ours and limiting some of the scope to avoid redundancies that they've had on theirs. Once that's completed, we'll be going and issuing some bids and RFPs for some work for the rest of the building to be completed, to use up some of the remaining CPC funds we've, we have.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank the rest of your board, please. Okay, do I have a, the joint meeting of the Water Commissioners, I had a request that we do that after 7:30. Is that still, okay?
Alan's on his way.
Okay, well, we'll just, we'll just move on. We'll get to that when, when he arrives, okay? Under Old Business, we have preparation for charter amendments, a discussion and possible vote. We have next week the Bi Law Charter Review Committee coming in. We committed when we last met with them to meet with them in September, give them some guidance as to, some early guidance as to what we want to try and accomplish in any charter changes going forward. In the packet, Copman and Page had issued a document, I think you all have, and I would just say, Chris has met with Don Howell and gone through some of these, and I just want to run through them because I would like the sense of the board as to how they would like to deal with some of these things, okay? So, the first one, the Charter, Town Charter Appointment Authority. Basically, what we've been looking at is this whole language of strong chief, and I think, you know, I have a yes next to that, that we certainly want to move forward with that. Any changes? Everybody on board with that one?
Yes.
Okay. Planning Board Appointments, I have a yes next to that. We ran into a situation where, you know, we were not, the Board of Selectmen, really weren't in compliance with the charter, trying to put someone in for less than, less than a three-year term, so we'd like to get that changed if something happens, either someone needs to be removed, resigns, or whatever, that we, we had the flexibility to deal with that, so I have a yes next to that one. I think, Chris, you had a yes with, with Don.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Would that, would the language change be one to three years type of language?
I would hope so.
I think the intent from our discussion with Don was to, you know, make sure that that ripples through, so we have flexibility to do one to three, not just.
Right, right. Three, the Eligibility of Finance Committee or FinCom members to serve on other committees. The feeling there is, no, leave it as it is. I don't know if everybody else is okay with that.
Aye.
Okay. Four was, on this, this memo was the appoint a library staff that's already been completed, so that's done. Number five is Contract and Bid Award Authority. I have a maybe next to that one. This board has given Christie authority up to $50,000, so the question becomes, do we need to do anything? Do we need to put that on the charter or just let it go at this point in time?
I think we'll, my opinion would be let it go. We gave the, we delegated the authority, and I think.
I gave it a seem sensible to me.
Seems sensible.
Just leave it.
To leave it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Appointment of the Harbor Master, I have a no next to that. This is the situation we got into, whether someone could be, be appointed or taken on as the Harbor Master, having served on the Waterways Committee. So, I have a no next to that. Is it, you guys okay with that? Seventy, Authority of the Gulf Committee, I have a no next to that one. Leave it the way it is. It's basically, you know, Chris has the operation, the responsibility for the, you know, Director of Gulf reporting to him on a day-to-day basis. Eight, I have a no, and that's CPA appropriations outside of Caput Lee Plan. Are we okay with that?
Which is leave it as it is.
Right.
Right. Nine, Appointment of Committees, I have a no. Leave it as it is. Okay? Ten, I have Creation of Water and Wastewater Commission. I just put a maybe there. That's going to evolve over time, and that's one of the inputs we're going to have this evening. Okay? Eleven, References to the School Department and Existing Charter. I put yes. Check it out. You know, wherever it talks about School Department, you know, now we have a Montomoy Regional School District, so the question is whether or not we should put Montomoy Regional School District as opposed to School Department. And then there's also, there was also a question of whether, under Highway Maintenance Departments, whether or not we'd entertain consolidating that into a Department of Public Works.
Consolidate or just rename it?
Rename it, I'm sure.
Rename, I think was the intent.
I think we should. That's what everybody calls it.
That's what it is.
Yeah.
That's what it is.
So, I think, to me, that's a yes.
So, put a yes next to that. Does anybody have any other ones that they wanted to bring up? So, what we're going to do is, for our meeting next week with the Bi Law Charter Review Committee, we'll get, we'll get this cleaned up, Chris, and we'll just identify the ones we want to work on, or have them work on. It gives them plenty of time to get this going.
Peter?
Yeah?
Can I suggest something else also? The Waterways Department had presented some material on the Harbor Master. The Harbor Master just doesn't even show up in, in the charter, and the question is, because he's actually one of the emergency employees, that's what his, his main job is, that he should be in, in that group with police and fire, and I believe the work has not been done, and I believe it has also been given to the Review Committee, but I would think it would make good sense, since we have virtually every other department specified.
Okay, Chris, you check that out, too.
Okay.
Put it on the list, yeah.
The only one, I heard different things on the, on the Contract and Bid Authority. The board's okay with just leaving that as a delegated authority?
Yep.
Okay.
Chris, a lot of these refer to attachments. Do you have those attachments?
We can get that for you.
It says, see attachment. Can I get that material early in the week if we're going to talk about this?
Yes. Thank you. On just those ones that you want to pursue?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
It's good.
Yep.
All right. Okay, we had that one. Well, Mr. Thompson's here. How are you, sir?
Jim?
So, the Water Commissioners set to go? Is that, you're fully staffed, functional, blah, blah, blah? Okay. We have, the reason we invited you in, we have, we have been discussing, we had the FinCom in a couple of weeks ago, et cetera, et cetera, potentially, you know, how do we structure wastewater organizationally? How do we structure it? And we see from the letter, a memo you sent us, that you folks, you know, have some ideas on that, and that's what we'd like to discuss. You know, we don't, we don't by any means plan to solve that issue tonight, but we're trying to get input and understand our options and see where people, you know, what they feel about it. So, maybe, I don't know, who wants to take the lead? Alan, do you want to do that and just describing what your thought process, process was and whatnot? But before we do that, can I just ask one question, one simple question, and I guess it takes a yes or no, and that is, have the Water Commissioners taken a position, taken a position on the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan? Approve it, disapprove it, like it, don't like it, endorse it, don't endorse it?
Well, I have to say that two of us serve on.
I understand that.
And, yes, the two of, in fact, we haven't asked Gary where he stands on it, but Janet and I are supporting it as we move ahead. You know, as far as formalities, you know, as it's put together right now, and, you know, with subject changes as we move ahead, you know, we're supporting it, so.
Okay, I, I just suggest, as a point of clarification, that at one of your meetings, you might want to have all three members vote, just to say, you know, we support it or whatever, just to go on record, if that's what you'd like to do.
Yeah.
Because then we at least can say, oh, by the way, the Water Commissioners have endorsed the plan.
Well, yeah. If we knew you would be asking for that tonight.
I understand.
Yeah, we could, we could have had that discussion, but we haven't, Gary's new one, and Gary hasn't been involved in it.
Right.
Sure, I'd love to see him. I mean.
I'm just asking sometime in the future, when it's convenient for you.
Yeah.
If you folks feel that you want to do it, I would ask that you vote to either support or not support the plan.
Yeah, okay. We'll, we'll come back on that one.
Thank you.
So, keep that in mind. But where we are tonight, you know, initially, and, and we had a lot of discussions, you know, just what direction, especially when Larry was on board. I think where we are today from where this first started, we went from, yeah, let's take a look at it, you know, go ahead, move together, but as time has gone on, you know, we've taken a new look at it, and the Water Commissioners have voted, their position is to have a five-member elected board to be water wastewater. Now, it's kind of funny or unique that you, you know, we, we say that. Well, we had commissioned a study back in 2012. I don't know if you folks have ever read it, but one of the things about the study was, was, one of the things of the options that were in the study was to, the town would combine its water and wastewater functions together into an amended or newly created water and sewer commission that would operate similar to the existing water commission. Two elected members with sewer qualifications would be added to the existing three-member water commissioner, commission, making it. water commissioner, commission, making it for an elected five-member water sewer commission. The water and sewer commissions would be elected on a regular basis, would oversee the operations in New Howard's Water and Sewer Department. Based on the existing water department structure and the cost estimating conducted by CDM Smith, it is anticipated that the combined department would require a staff of nineteen full-time people. The synergies of the building process, the water quality testing, utility crews would be realized, and the annual ONM cost would be about two million. This represents an estimated cost savings of about 500,000. The new personnel will include the following, two part-time, two new part-time commissions, two positions for sewer treatment and testing, and two positions for sewer collection system maintenance. So that's when you got up and running. You know, that's some time away, not even close at this point. So with that, that was one of the bases, the options were all over the place, you know, five others. But as we took a look at it, and we look at where we've been as of today, I, you know, the Water Department's been in business for eighty years, and they've always had elected Water Commissioners from day one. I happened to catch a discussion with the Finance Committee, and I, I have to say, you know, you know, one may think there may be issues, such as, you know, the tanks. The reasoning for a change in the tank design for us was the bids that came in, they were 2.3 million and 2.8 million just for paint job. We had paid 1.6 million to do the Route 39 tank, you know, it's a fancy process. So at that point, our attitude was that maybe we should take a look at our tank designs and come up with something more affordable and less maintenance, such as the Pleasant Lake Tank. We're not sure at what point, but it's several years away before we have to do anything there, maybe a little touch-up, but one thing about it, it, it doesn't get the steelwork that's necessary in the, in the elevated tanks with the legs. The erosion, the salt and everything, each way up around at the bowl and around the legs, very expensive. So we could build a tank for the kind of money between the 2.3 and the 2.8, replace the tanks that we have, so it made sense to go that way. As far as other issues with the department, you know, you know, it's, it's easy, how do I want to say, you know, is to guess, but in today's day and age, whatever you do as far as the department, you have to good, good solid information, good solid direction, and know that you're not doing anything that would cause, cause problems for the town. Some of the things about the Water Department is, we, we're elected and in charge of people's health. Health, number one. For every drop of water that runs through the lines and comes out in your tap, I mean, the potential to make you sick is there. And so we take our charge very seriously. So does the DEP. They overlook us. If we goof up, the costs are high, the job losses come quick. We've seen in other towns where, you know, weathered the storm too well. So with that, a lot of thoughts and many, many more. The, the feeling is the Selectmen have a full boat. You guys at least put twenty hours a weekend, you have quite a menu, and the feeling is that there's a lot to learn as far as the Water Department. Angelo has served with us, Larry's served with us, and Mike is now the new liaison. That's more Selectmen that have been around in the last three years than have been the last twenty years, so, you know, it's important, we like having the liaison, and if you were to go with this five-member elected board, it doesn't mean that you can lay back and everything is being handled. That's the first thing from where we all stand, is that the Selectmen still have to sign bond issues, the Selectmen still have to participate in, I would like to think, in any kind of fee structures as such. The Selectmen need to participate with us as far as the town meetings go. You know, this isn't, you can walk away from it, you're still involved. Some of the other things is, there's a lot of things go on at the Water Department, and it starts with issues of water services, issues with unpaid bills, issues with complaints, and I don't think the board, the Selectmen want to pick up that workload. And it goes on and on as, as this kind of approach, that the board, I think, has done a pretty darn good job over the last few years. I've been there since 2010. Denecks is, how many? Twenty-one years. So, and then we have Gary, who's fresh out of the election pit, so.
Solid five months.
So.
Active five months.
Yeah.
Fully engaged five months.
We plan on keeping him around, he's the future, so he can't walk away. And, and then Dan is new, and he's itching to go. So Dan's willing to pick up the torch as the head of water, wastewater, and he came on, on that plan, and so we're kind of looking forward to see what we could do. The, a couple of things I have to say as far as the water goes. For many years, the town, the town accepted the, all the funds from the Water Department, and it wasn't until 2006, I believe, was when it went on to the Enterprise Fund. Well, since that time, the department has tried to address its rate schedules and reinvest and restore the assets of the department. You figure that what's out there, some of it's fifty years old, forty years old, eighty years old. So, you know, as we move ahead, you know, it's, by the time wastewater really comes into full bloom, I like to think that the, the assets that you can see will have been addressed complete, such as tanks, towers, treatment plants, all of that type of thing, that at such time is, when it's time to dig in the ground to lay sewer manes, those eighty or hundred-year-old manes at that point can be addressed and address it together as far as laying pipe. But we're at the point for water is that we have to restore the assets in order to take more out, and we've been on a pretty good roll, and I think the, the other side of this whole thing is that when we talk about the assets, I, I like to think that when we talk about funding this, is that we're funding the department not by a per-gallon basis, but what it costs us to draw that water up and put it in your tap. It's, I think we have to give you free water, but you have to pay us for getting it out of the ground and sending it to your, your home, and maintaining it, keeping an eye on it whatsoever. The, let's see, as far as, to go back, as we move ahead, you know, the Water Selectmen, Finance Committee, Town Administrator, Capital Lee, Capital Lee, Town Meeting and the ballot all have to participate, so we, we may be the managers, but we're all still a part of the player. The, alright, I think for now, I, I'll sort it open, my fellow members can add in, Dan, or you can.
Hey, let me ask a couple questions first, I guess, and that is, when I think of Water Commissioners, and, you know, you guys are serving staggered three-year terms basically, right? And I can't remember recently, a contested race. Has there been a contested race recently?
Not yet.
Huh?
Not yet.
Oh, you don't count.
Yeah.
I guess my question is, do you think you'd generate enough interest to get, in essence, five people to be running for the position?
You know, don't forget, Peter, we have a whole wastewater committee of people.
I understand that.
Very capable.
I understand that. You know, some people, when it comes to.
The ballot?
Running as opposed to being appointed, I'm just throwing this out there, that's all. It's a little different to say, okay, I'll put my name in the hat, potentially for someone to appoint me, or pick me, or interview me. It's another thing when you get into the election cycle and, you know, you, okay, you got to go get some signature, I mean, you got to do a little bit of work to get there, right?
Yeah.
So that is kind of interesting. I, I just hope in that scenario that would actually attract, you know, that many people, if you will.
You know, I, I think it's such an important thing, I mean, it never even enters my mind, I mean, as far as that side of it. I really firmly believe that you'll always have somebody step up to the plate to do that.
Yeah.
And if it changes, you can always change it.
Who knows? I, I would also ask, and you don't need to give me any real details, but I think we all know there was a significant management issue we had down there recent, not recently, but, you know, prior to certainly Dan coming here. What steps or how would you make sure that doesn't happen again?
Well, number one is, we have a very different department today. It's all very open, the employees, all of the employees may talk to the Commissioners at any time, they can talk to the Town Administrator, and they know that. There, there is no one-person operation. The other thing is that we've taken this past year to make many, many changes in the department. Instead of letting particular policies go to someone's whim, they're written policies now within the department and ongoing. So either follow the policies that are set by the Commissioners and the staff, or it doesn't happen. You can't just say to somebody, well, today you can't have it, but tomorrow you can, type of thing, you know, because I don't think you're worthy of it, or, you know, those kinds of things. If you're a good employee, you have no issue. And as far as the department goes, it's very open today in comparison to where it was in, in the past few, few years. And we've taken a lot of steps. Mr. Clark can share with you the fact that we created all the policies right now on the cell phone, you know, that your folks hadn't done yet, we're still looking to see your, go at it, but, you know, the computer, we picked that up, the computer issues as far as what can use them for, and on and on, you know, all the factors are there. Open meeting, all the policies, anything that has to do with them.
So we've learned, we've learned a lot as we've gone.
I may tell you, it's worth having that one year without any leadership.
My fear there is, my concern, I guess I would say, is I know how much time Chris had to spend, the Town Administrator had to spend being involved with the Water Department, and it's just, quite frankly, it detracts from everything, it did detract from everything else that had to get done in town, so it was a big, a big perturbation, if you will. Hopefully it's all behind us, and I think it is, but I hope we learned a lot from that, okay?
Well, you see in the past that the staff couldn't come to the Commissioners' meetings. That's all changed now.
Yeah, I understand that.
Staff wants to come to the Commissioners, they come.
Yeah.
The staff gets the opportunity to evaluate their boss as well as we evaluate.
Right. Could I ask another question related to this, or it's not exactly on, on how you'd structure this? Does, does the Water Department at the moment have a plan that matches or parallels, you know, what the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan is? And let's just say for East Harwich, the plan for what's going to be done out there sewer-wise to match it with what you might need water-wise? Is there a plan in place?
You know, in, to compare the two, as it stands now, East Harwich is pretty well set for water. It's the newest part of town. Most of the water lane, water lines put in out there nowadays have been put in by the contractors or subdivision developers. You know, that switch came, let's see, sometime early eighties, when, when the, all the development was going on. The, the, rather than have the Water Department bear the burden, so as the Planning Board went through the process, the Water Department went through the process, and those manes were all installed, hydrants and everything, to codes. So all that type of work was done. Our problems when it comes to sewer will be in the older parts of towns, Howard Center, Howard Sport, West Harwich. Those are the areas that we, you know, have main problems. Finally, we have, we're looking at about 25 million in updates of the parts of the Water Department you can't see, that's buried underground. We have asbestos manes in there that every now and then dispatched, went there, created a problem for us, where the ductile line pipe goes into the asbestos, it splits, and so we have to patch it up. But at some point, there's several miles of it, and that is actually one of our priorities to do, and we may get to that before, some of it before we do wastewater, because, you know, those parts, those parts of town are slated for twenty years probably.
So, so therein lies the question, I mean, I think you, I think everybody knows, but now near-term focus is East Harwich and Pleasant Bay, the Pleasant Bay watershed, let's just say that.
Yeah.
And so from a water standpoint.
We're set.
You think you're in good shape.
Yeah.
And so when we're doing the wastewater part of it, it's mainly to run it basically in parallel, whatever, with the water stuff.
Yeah.
But not a big water infrastructure part of that.
That's correct.
Until we get, and I'm just making this up, eight years later, and start, you know, getting into the, the real significant old parts of, of town, if you will, as far as water goes.
Yes, East Harwich is the newest part of our system, and, you know, we're pretty well set out there.
And, and one of the reasons, Alan, I asked whether or not you folks had endorsed the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, what I wouldn't want to see with all that work that's gone on in the plan, to say, okay, now the Water Commissioners are now Water Wastewater Commissioners, yes, or fire them, by the way, now they want to change the whole plan and start working in other areas of town sooner rather than later because they want to do water and wastewater at the same time. I'm, I'm just raising that topic, that's all.
Yeah, no, but there are places in town, like, there are places that have water manes already in, but they're dry, hydrants are dry, but there's complications as far as laying manes to them, and, you know, those kinds of issues will have to be looked out, looked at in the future, but there's also a problem in that particular area, road layout, what the town owns, or what the town would want to own a 50-foot right of way. I don't think it's possible. So those issues are out there, and until they can be resolved, there isn't much, there's no way here, there'd be water there, or, you know, all those dry manes that are out there will stay that way, or whenever, you know, but they are out there. But Howard Sport, Howard Center, West Harwich, 28, pretty much where, where we will run into trouble. We have a lot of two-inch main out there, needs to be upgraded to six. We have places where we have restrictions, where we have a 10-inch main, connecting to a 16-inch main, it puts a choke on the water pressure. We have that on Sisson Road, you know, areas that, as such. So as we move into the old part, older parts of town, we will have to spend some money.
I understand, I understand. What did you have, a question?
To go back to the policies so that we can, that you have all written, I understand that, that you've written a series of policies. What are you doing, or could you talk about how you are ensuring that those policies are actually happening? Is there a plan to, I don't know, look at cell phone bills to make sure they're not calling the 1-900 numbers? Or, you know, going through, in computers, the sites that have been accessed? What are your plans for the actual supervision?
Yeah. I think Dan could answer that one better, sure, because he's already doing it.
Dan Pelletier, Water Commissioner.
How you doing?
Excuse me, Water Superintendent, I'm sorry, Dan. You're not elected.
No.
You're actually paid.
Yeah. You know, we get monthly bills through Verizon, and I take that opportunity, and I do go through, and I look at every single phone and look at the data usage. And if there's anything that comes up, you know, it's, I think it's actually impossible to get exactly what people use their data on, but if people aren't supposed to be using data, I bring it up, and I confront them and ask them, you know, what, what did you do? A lot of times, someone sat on their phone, it's one of the old dumb phones, and you push a button, and it pulls up the internet. You get a nickel or a quarter charge. But I've been going through, at least since June 1st, and, you know, being very diligent about making sure everything is as it should.
And who reviews yours?
I guess me.
That's Alan? I said, who reviews Dan's records? And hopefully, it's not Dan. Hopefully, the commissioners take a cruise through that.
All the bills do go through administration, so whether it's water department-
Yeah, when they sign the warrant, I mean, there's-
I didn't, that's not the question I'm asking. I'm not asking the question. I'm asking-
Yeah, use the mic, please, just a little.
I'm asking, the question is, if we have policies in place to ensure that, or to at least tell the employees they're not supposed to be doing X, Y, and Z, the question was the supervision of that. Dan is looking at the stuff from his employees. My question is, who is looking at Dan's?
I'm looking at Dan.
Thank you, that's all I need.
Yes, ma'am. I signed the final warrant. After Dan has gone over, I get a chance to look at it. We didn't used to do that.
I'm not asking about the warrant. I'm asking about the bill itself.
Bill, everything is right there in my hands.
Right. So, you're the person who's supervising his usage? I'm done, I'm set.
It's actually the water commissioners. There's an issue with the superintendent that comes before the board. You know, we work together. But as far as the warrants go, I sign them, and from time to time, if I can, Jeanette would go in, and she'd have the opportunity to look and question also. So, Gary, he could do it too, but he's out, the opportunity to do that is-
Appreciate it. My only question was making sure somebody was looking at the superintendent.
Yep. I am trying.
And Gary's anxious to speak behind you, so.
Yes.
Let's let Gary speak. Did you have something on that topic?
I just wanted to see if we could get back to the conversation about governments and not about policies.
Thank you, Mr. McCaslin. That's what I thought we were here for this evening, to discuss water and wastewater. And we went way off subject, as far as I was concerned. But quickly, to respond to that inappropriate and unprofessional comment, you should probably look in-house, the things that go on right here in town, before you really start casting stones at other departments. Like it or not, we have a award-winning level of water due to the previous water superintendent. And we are moving forward in the right direction with that. So, I just think that was uncalled for, actually, at this time.
Really? That's interesting.
Okay.
You know, we lived through that experience, and I'd like to know how it was rectified and how it's not going to happen in the future, that's all. So, that's all we're trying to find out.
And I think we are moving forward to, one of the comments was, how is it going to oversee Dan's performance? We have in place an employee index that we have just put in place, where the employees will review Dan's performance. And part of our review of Dan will be taking that into consideration to do our evaluation on Dan in the future.
Terrific. That's all we want to know, quite frankly, because we had issues in the past. Now, the water commissioners are recommended, number one, they get expanded to five, and they take on wastewater in addition to water. So, we have some responsibility to understand if we have solved some of the issues that have been there in the past. I don't think it's inappropriate at all. Please don't get defensive about it. We're just trying to understand that, we're trying to understand that, before we just stand up and say, here, take it and go run with it, okay? This is a lot of taxpayer money, a lot of taxpayer money for the next 40 years, and we want to try and make this the best we can.
And I absolutely agree. But I think it all comes down to checks and balances, too.
Absolutely.
When Alan presented, we recommended a five-person-appointed board. You made a comment that, what if nobody runs? What if there's no interest?
Yeah.
I don't think that's a reason not to have a five-person elected board. Give people the right and the opportunity to run. If a vacancy comes up, like the charter says, the selectmen have the authority to appoint a body to their seat until someone else seeks election, or until the term is up, and you can reappoint that person for a following year. Is that just another option?
No doubt about that. No doubt about that. But you have to understand, we're also listening to other people, FinCom and whatnot, to say, how would they do it? What are their ideas? You know, we're not going to decide this tonight. We're trying to explore options, that's all, and we're trying to understand it.
Right. That was just an option that we have to move forward.
And we appreciate you bringing it forward. That's why we're having this discussion.
I do have a draft letter that was present, that was created from Giorgio, about doing away or abolishing the water commissioners altogether, and having the selectmen oversee, and town administrator oversee, the future of the water wastewater.
Yeah.
Is that, and that was created back on May 5th of 2015. But this is the first time we've actually sat down and had a conversation as our two boards.
I actually think that there was some documentation created last November on that topic.
Yeah, there was earlier versions. That was the final iteration.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yep. Angelo?
I must admit, Alan, that I enjoyed my time as it lays on to the water commissions. I learned a lot. And I was very pleased to learn how well the departments worked. The people who were working there, I thought, were terrific. So, I think that, from that standpoint, it demonstrates, I've watched the group working with residents who are not happy about the situation with N-Star or the guy who digs for gas pipes and whatnot, and I thought it was very good. I have a couple of concerns. And they're my concerns, because I haven't, we really haven't had this discussion. You mentioned an elected body that has some experience in engineering and whatnot. That's kind of a hard thing to do. If you mean an elected body, there are going to be residents of this town who are going to apply. If you had an appointed body, you could scour the town to find somebody. But I'm not at all sure that you need that at all. I don't think our, the newest member has an engineering and water engineering background. I'm not sure about you. I don't think it matters. What you need to have is a management level of skill and an understanding, because you have somebody sitting there who has the technical ability. So, I don't know if you want to have that as a requirement. I don't know how you enforce it. My view, if I were king and I could make it work, what I would do is keep the current board, the current director of wastewater and water, but have a hook to the selectmen. Because I have a concern, my concern is, every time in this town or other towns, you have an elected board that's in charge of a thing. And I'm going to use a fire department for a second, so we get everybody out of this. We buy secondhand fire trucks. We buy them from a district with elected people. Because their whole concern is the fire department, and they don't mind, as you can tell by all the articles in the paper, raising taxes or getting money to get new trucks. And we get perfectly acceptable, good trucks from them with all sorts of equipment thrown in, because they like to go out and buy new ones. And I'm afraid that when, what happens is, you have one group on a townwide basis that have only one responsibility. That becomes the prime thing. And I think one of the things that the selectmen can bring to the party is, as a setting of priorities, a balancing across all different kinds of activities. I'm not saying change the financing situation. All the money that is collected has to go where it's going and spent on those activities. But I think it's necessary to have a policy group looped in. I wouldn't know exactly how you would connect it to, but we have a golf committee that has certain kinds of issues, a wastewater committee, and the director of golf, and the director of harbors. And we all operate together, get together, discuss the whole situation. So, I think if this board does what it's supposed to do and deal with policies and priorities, rather than getting into the nitty-gritty, you would need, even if we were the only board, you would need a group of three to five people working directly with that group. And I think that makes sense. It runs parallel to what we've done. And then, we have a linkage between all the departments. That's, and it's not because I don't think the group does a good job. I think they do, as you know, a magnificent job. Yeah, but I think it's a difficult situation when you separate it out.
Now, you had me a bit lost. If I could just jump in, what are you proposing?
What I'm proposing is, I thought I was very clear. You keep the board the way it is, the commissioners.
Elected?
No.
Okay, so you don't keep them the way they are?
You keep the people, the current people, on the board.
Yeah.
Ask them to stay on the board, if they would. Sorry.
What's the board called now?
Wastewater Water Committee.
Okay, and?
And you, they report, I guess, through the town administrator, the way everybody else does. And he reports to us, the way everybody else does, except one or two groups. And you end up in the same kind of situation that Chatham has. And I think that there are a lot of benefits, because you have the same skill set in place. They do the same things that they do now, and we should be, you know, dealing basically with policy and dealing with Chatham, and dealing with county, and all of those kinds of things, rather than dealing with the work at hand. I don't, I don't understand why we would want to have another elected body.
Okay, but, oh, wait. Are you saying they wouldn't be elected?
No, I'm saying they would not be elected. They'd be appointed.
Okay. No, I understand what you're getting at.
And by the way, if you wanted to appoint somebody only with engineering background, we could do that, if we could find them. Angelo, one thing. First off, I don't think I had in mind people with an engineering background to serve on this committee. You would be paying for engineers as this project moves forward. It, don't forget, it's adaptive. It's, you know, not in cement at this point. Hopefully, something great will come out, and we'll never have to do running sewer lines all over town. And the other thing is, I have to say, we enjoyed immensely having you there. And, you know, as far as managing the water department, this past year, we got a new truck. We turned in a 99 Ford with 250,000 miles that pretty well rotted out and everything. You know, we try to get our money's worth and, you know, keep us abreast of things. And, you know, as we move ahead, you know, we had this discussion tonight, and again, we can have more of them. This isn't going to happen in the next week or two, so we can take the time to think about things. But currently, as it stands now, the board looks at a elected five-member and, you know, go at that direction. So, yeah, we'll just go on from here. But any more questions?
Okay.
So, I'd like to mirror Angelo's comments about what a pleasure it's been to work with the water commissioners in the short amount of time that I have. I think what they're proposing, though, is not creating a new elected board. They're expanding a current elected board. You know, and increasing their responsibilities, but also increasing their membership, giving five people. Whether or not that many people run in an election, I guess we'll just have to wait and see. But an elected body is answerable to the taxpayers in town. We're an elected body, I think, with a pretty specific charge. And I'm not sure where the expertise falls on this board for water and wastewater. The water commissioners have proven themselves. The water commissioners have run a great operation for the town. We're really just expanding that. Two of our members of our water commissioners sit on the WIC, the Wastewater Implementation Committee. So, I think that they have a whole lot more knowledge than we have. But again, back to, it's not creating a new elected body, it's expanding an existing elected body and increasing the position. And I think that, as far as the taxpayers go, I don't see why we would want to put that on ourselves, rather than continue the utility and add to it.
But by changing it, you're changing the board. It's a new board. They have new, would have new responsibilities, new accountabilities, right? And I don't know, I guess there's a small difference. I don't imagine anybody on the Chatham board of selectmen has a great deal of knowledge of wastewater or water. That's not their responsibility. That's not their role. We don't have to have that kind of responsibility. There are a couple of people, I think you didn't have a terrible big pile of knowledge about water until the last five, six months ago, did you?
Actually, that was my running platform. I have no knowledge of water.
Okay.
I have no knowledge of wastewater. But our superintendent does. It's going to be his job, like it is to Chris's job, to run the town. As far as your background in municipal, working in municipality, I mean, how much knowledge do you guys have working in the municipality? Okay, but you defer to Chris to run the town. You set policy and procedure, just like we would do. We'll set policy and procedure, and it'll be up to Dan to run it on a day-to-day basis.
I absolutely agree with you. And what the commissioners then have to do is deal with the kinds of things that they're currently dealing with on a broader scale. I understand that. But the selectmen could do the same thing. But not that piece. You wouldn't take on that task. The task would stay with the commissioners, or whatever they're called, committee members, who are in place. It's a parallel to every other department we have, virtually, except by state law.
Well, I guess we just disagree on being appointed versus, I think, an elected body being accountable to the taxpayers carries more weight than being an appointed body. It's more likely that I'm going to offend three people up here and be removed from a board than I am going to offend maybe the majority of the voters. As far as I'm concerned, if I'm doing and representing the people who elect me appropriately, then I will be here. But I just don't think an appointed board with this caliber of work really is effective. But that's just-
You know, one thing we haven't talked about, and that is the synergies between what goes in and what comes out, and that's water, and wastewater. I mean, it's about pipes, it's about liquids, it's about chemistry, it's about equipment, it's about pumps and valves and meters and those kinds of things. Now, there are differences, obviously, in different rules and regulations, but a lot of this stuff is very similar. I think you would agree with that. No, I understand. You've been patient. How are you?
Just one thing that we really haven't touched on much is about that it makes financial sense. With the SCADA system that we already have in place, that's the brains of our operation, pretty much. We have that already in place, our billing software. We're able to handle the wastewater, you know, with the usage and everything. And we already have in place our superintendent. He's wastewater, he's done this before. So, just, and Alan read tonight that it's going to save at least $500,000 because of the setup that we have already in place.
I'd suggest, just to help us all out, is that you might want to take a shot at what a little organizational trap might look like in, you know, whether you divide water and wastewater, how you do that. Dan probably has some thoughts on that, the commissioners probably do as well. And just so that we can get a better understanding of, you know, how you, and I don't mean tomorrow, but in the future, organize that whole department, if you will. Would be very interesting. And as Annette just said, you know, you're already doing some things that would, you know, transfer right over to wastewater, if you will. So, we'd like to better understand that, maybe. So, it takes a little bit of work, but I suggest you, I don't know what you call putting a plan together, or just, you know, put something together that gives us an indication of what this thing would look like. Chris, then I'll get to Leo.
Linda had her hand up first.
Okay, Linda. Then I'll get to Chris, then I'll get to Leo. Now I'll get to Chris, then I'll get to Leo. Problem.
The report that you're referencing, that you had done, is that on your website? I haven't looked for it there, but is it on your website or anybody's website? If the answer is no, can it be put up on at least the town's website so people can read this? But I don't know if it's on, I don't, is it on our websites?
You don't have a hard copy of that?
I don't have a hard copy of it.
I don't remember.
But I think also I'd like it on our website so that the public can read this and see what, and then they can have a better understanding. Thank you.
Why don't you get it to Michael, and he can pass it on to us, you know, because I think you attend most of your meetings, right, if not all of them?
Yeah, I actually have it. They forwarded it to me after last meeting, so, and I agree with you. So I'll forward it to the people that put it on the website, see if we can get it on the town website.
And put it on the website.
And I will distribute it to them.
Chris?
Mr. Chairman, you know, I've had the unique opportunity in my time being here to take down and work with the water commission. And, you know, I just want to make a couple of points that I think are really relevant to the discussion. You know, one, every town has its own charter and has its own unique way of doing things. And I think that, obviously, the Board of Selectmen is the primary elected body. But this town has entrusted with other agencies, specifically the library and the water commission, to deal with those two specific areas. So there is at least a legislative history and a legal history in the town that, for these areas, that it has been entrusted in an elected body. And as we move forward, I think that it would be something at least of significance to make a change, to go from elected to appointed. I've served on charter commissions, I've had a lot of experience. Anytime you do a dramatic change, you get usually a pretty good reaction from that. The other thing I wanted to say is that in working with the water commission, you know, they were very, very open when I presented and brought back to the board that, you know, the recommendation of having a wastewater superintendent, that we asked for that to be expanded, I believe a hundred percent, that I've been in several towns that have had sewer agencies and water agencies, and to consolidate and have one agency be able to do the billing, for example, and do the customer service and do the budgets, just makes a whole lot of sense. So from a business perspective, I think having these merged in one. In terms of, one of the comments, too, about the checks and balances, it is interesting that in the charter, that we do have a legal opinion that has been followed, that the appointment of the employees, all the employees down there, with the exception of the water superintendent, actually comes through the administrator and through the Board of Selectmen. So we do have some good checks and balances, and that was one of the things, obviously, I was concerned about in terms of that. They have also upgraded one of the positions to an assistant superintendent to create a better reporting mechanism, if you would, if there were issues that emerged down in the department. So I think that the water commission, you know, has been very open to working. I think having the two out of the three members on the wastewater, you know, does lend itself to having a serious consideration be given to incorporating and having the board's work. And the other thing that really strikes me, I've had the opportunity to start to really dig in in a more concrete way, kind of the financing of this. And, you know, to me, they're just not going to have enough sewer people signed up, or wastewater customers signed up, to have any real significance. And, you know, one of the primary funding mechanisms that's going to be part of, really, probably for the next twenty years plus, is going to be debt exclusions. And only, only the Board of Selectmen can put debt exclusions on the ballot. So there's going to be a significant partnership in the development of wastewater in the community. And I think that continuing that partnership with an entity that does exist and does function does make, you know, a whole lot of sense. I'm always in a funny spot when I see a split board, so, you know, I see two different points of view. But, you know, you pay me for my experience, and I guess I at least want to share some of the observations that I have. And, you know, the one thing that I would like to see is, obviously, when we go to town meeting, if FinCom, Selectmen, and Water Commission are all on the same page, you get a lot further, I think, with town meeting when there's a mutual recommendation. So just something to keep in mind in terms of, at least my thoughts and my time in service here, not only to the Board of Selectmen, but also with the Water Commission.
Okay, regarding the timing, I'll just say that since we haven't voted anything, you know, we're just discussing this. This could end up being part of a charter change that goes to the spring, you know, town meeting. It could be a year from then. It could, you know, we want to make sure we discuss this enough and people have enough input that we, you know, make the right choice. Don't rush into this, although it could be, you know, it could be brought to the spring town meeting, so. Leo, you've been patient out there.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to apologize for my attire, but I came right from the farm to here, so this is a very important issue to me and to a lot of the residents in the town of Howard, and I just wanted to be able to express my thoughts on the matter. For the record, my name is Leo Hakounis, I'm a resident of North Howard. I'm before you this evening to express my concerns as a citizen of Howard, and that I strongly disagree with the potential charter change that would disband the current water commissioners and transfer their duties to the Board of Selectmen as the new water and sewer commission. At a joint meeting of the Howard Selectmen and the Finance Committee about three weeks ago, both boards seemed to be in favor of abolishing our current water commissioners and have the water and sewer duties under the Selectmen. Also, at that meeting, some comments were made that I believe were unwarranted and misleading. Specifically, that the current water commissioners could not manage their own superintendent. How could they be expected to manage a water and sewer department? I find that comment quite offensive and a little bit of the kettle calling the pot black. During my last thirty years here, I've been involved in the town of Howard. The water department has been an outstanding and award-winning department in Howard. I cannot help to think what Ms. Ann Smith would be thinking right now if she were alive, so I'm hoping that my, I'm going to attempt tonight to honor her with some comments. Under Water Commissioner Superintendent Barry Woods, the Howard Water Department made an unprecedented strides in providing the residents with top quality of water. We had countless awards and citations from the state and the federal government. That excellent standard continued under the present water commissioners and Superintendent Wigan. To focus on one incident that occurred involving the behavior of an employee not only is narrow-minded, but insults the years of outstanding work of our water commissioners have done. And I would like to add that the water commissioners handled that particular instance with professionalism and legal discretion. I challenge the Board of Selectmen to review their conduct and record on handling employees. Why, just in the last two years, we've had issues in the front office, the administrator's position, the assistant administrator's position, finance department, the treasurer, not to mention the golf situation. I also challenge the Board of Selectmen to compare the job of the water commissioners have done with their building maintenance, under their care and custody. Let's see if we can get the building inspector to tour their sites and the sites that are currently under your care and custodally. I guarantee you that the water department's sites are well-maintained and compliant. The Selectmen had to rely on volunteers to paint the Albra House, which is right next door and full view of your meetings every night. They're also now looking for volunteers to help with the Downey Purchase. And need I even attempt to bring up the purchase of the land for the wastewater recharge and the fiasco that that caused at our last town meeting? It seems to me that the Board of Selectmen have enough on their plate right now, and they would be overtaxed with the responsibility of adding the water and sewer care under their direction. The Finance Committee was worried about the control of the money. Need I remind you that neither the Finance Committee nor the Board of Selectmen hold the purse strings? That's the responsibility of town meeting and the residents of town of Howard. I suggest that you keep the two separate boards, increase the water commissioners to five elected members, and charge them with the operation of our water and sewer department. I also would like to take this time to explore that the five members have a three-year term. Four are to be elected from our precincts. Two seats in one year, two seats the next year, because we have four precincts in the town of Howard. And then the single seat, such as the Board of Selectmen have, the single seat that gets elected by itself, shall be elected at large. This may encourage citizens to get involved and be more representative of their neighborhood. The Selectmen would still be signing the bonding and approving all the articles for town meeting, so you would still be holding at least one purse string. And also, if there were to be an elected water and sewer board, the Selectmen would have the authority to appoint someone if, for some reason, the citizens did not choose to run for that seat. So the checks and balances are there. Your decision on this matter is not just for the present Board of Selectmen, but it's for the future Board of Selectmen and the citizens who choose to serve as Selectmen. We have many elections without contested races. Citizens feel that the commitment to, with the present workload is too much. And I look towards our two newest members and see how they feel on this matter, with the new undertaking that they took as Selectmen. The system is an elected water and sewer board, currently elected, and the currently elected Selectmen provide the residents of Howard with a proven check and balance system. Please do not consider abolishing that board and taking on full responsibility, but look into further keeping it and expanding it to five. And once again, Chris stole a lot of what I was also going to say, and I agree with some of his comments. But thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thanks, Leo. Anybody else on this topic?
Well, I just want to...
Go ahead, Angelo.
Apparently, I wasn't very clear. I don't want this board to take over the responsibilities that that group has at all. And I want to keep that group intact, doing what they're doing. I just want a strong link between this board and the activities that are taken under, so it can be balanced across the town. Just think of any other group that has total control of a situation, like our school system. We used to have a whole different relationship when there was a linkage. And I think we need to maintain a linkage, because otherwise, we're going to run into trouble in the future. I wouldn't change any of what they do at all, because they come in, we chat about their budgets, and we chat about everything else. We do. But we have some input into them, and that's what we need to maintain. It's not eliminating them. As I said before, I think they do a wonderful job. It'd be foolish to eliminate them. It's a change to accommodate what we're doing going forward. That's all it is.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Alan.
You know, I have to say, Angelo, if we were coming in and asking for a district, I could see your concerns, because a district would be like having another Monomoy. You know, we take everything away, you have no say. This is just elected positions. We still participate, just like we do today. We're here before you. We always, you all, we come. You know, we're still a part of the town, and, I mean, for a long time, it just kind of disappeared. But I like us being out there in the forefront. Everybody sees what's going on, and they know their affairs are being handled properly. So...
Okay. Anybody else? No? Go ahead, Alan.
Just one comment.
Yeah.
I just want to say, Chris Clark was fantastic helping us out for that whole year. It was such a plus. He had the opportunity to get to know us well and see how things went, offered up a lot of great suggestions, and which we took to heart, and he was a tremendous asset to us, and I appreciate that.
Anybody else? Okay, I want to come on this later. You know, we're not in a rush, I don't think, to get this figured out, but if you have any more information you want to provide us, you know, any thoughts, please bring them back to us or send them to us or whatever, and we'll continue the dialogue, so. Okay? That's for sure. All right, thank you. All right, moving on to new business. Leo mentioned we had the Albra House sitting next door, and as part of that project, there is a garage in the back, and there's a little addition. I call it a doghouse on the driveway side, that we want to take some action to disposition. So that's why we have it on the agenda. Chris, you...
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Just as a overview, the board, probably about a month ago at this point, wanted to, before any action was taken about the demolition of the garage or the addition, wanted to make sure that we had the input from the Historic Commission. So we did receive a memo of September third dating here that, or stating here that they have no problem with these items to be removed. And it's really the two components that we're talking about is the detached garage and the addition to the east side. Both of those are still white, so they did not get painted in the hopes that this would be, these items would be removed. I don't believe either one has historic significance, so that's why the Historic Commission wanted to go in that direction. And then the second component, the materials, I did put in a sample, I got the sample from the town engineer for, I know there was some interest by the board that if you do declare those two elements, that they are surplus and can be removed, that it would be administration's intent to send out a quick little RFP here, or I guess what we call an RFP, to see if someone would come and remove those structures at minimal cost, or hopefully no cost. If we put this on the street for two weeks and no one bids on it, or no one comes forward, then I would ask the Department of Public Works to come in and demolish the property, demolish those two elements and to have those be carted off. I think the estimate from Mr. Hooper was approximately, he thought it would be less than five-hundred dollars. I think we received about seventeen-hundred, if I have the materials and donations, so there's sufficient funds that if this was to be removed internally, if we could not get a bidder, or if a bidder came in at a very high rate to take these out. So I wanted to at least show the board that we had prepared a, and this is draft form, it could use some additional tweaks. But that's what administration is basically recommending at this point, that we would move forward on that Albra House, taking those two steps, the board declare as surplus, those two items, and proceed with the removal of those two items.
Is there a question?
Is this a soliciting quote, is it for the demolition of these properties, or is it for the removal of them? Because if you're looking for bids for someone to remove, that's not demolish, or am I just not understanding?
We would, that's what I'm saying, that this is kind of a draft form. I would add the element of remove, but I think for our purposes, we want to have a bid that would have these two structures gone, physically removed.
And is it essential, it says here, prevailing wage rates? Is that, this is only a project to get this thing out of here?
Well, I, I'm not a big fan of the, some of the Commonwealth's massive rules and regulations, and prevailing wage is one of those that, you know, I think in this circumstance, I believe that the engineer has it right. It does depend upon, if it's a small contractor that wants to remove it, then independent contractors, sole proprietor, independent contractors do not have to follow prevailing wage. It's one of the few elements to it. I would imagine this is a fairly small job, so we may get that type of bidder. But failing that, I think that certainly our DPW folks can engage and do this, so we have a fallback plan if we do not receive a bid.
Michael?
I would ask why we're considering getting rid of the garage and the addition? Have we come up with a long-term plan for the building, or is there an immediate need to make a decision to tear those two things down?
Want to comment on that? I think if you talk about the doghouse, the doghouse was put on some time ago, but it's certainly not in the character of the building. And the folks I've talked to in the Historic Group want to see what's underneath there. I mean, you open the door, and you can see what's there. It's the old, original-looking side of the house for that part of it. And then the garage, in my estimation, is nobody's using it and hasn't used it for a long time, so. And it doesn't fit in with the character of the building, as far as I can tell. Do you know, did you have a comment?
We don't know what we're going to do with the Albra House at this point, correct? We don't know if we're going to keep it as a town-owned property. We don't know if we're going to put it on the market. We don't know if any other departments are going to be moved into there. It's in such disrepair inside as well. And there's no Wi-Fi over there. We have one department in there now, and she doesn't have Wi-Fi. I would say, hold off on doing anything more until we decide what to do with it. And if a private buyer was wanting to buy that property, who's to say they wouldn't want the garage? Who's to say they wouldn't want the... Who's to say they wouldn't want the doghouse? I think that until we know for sure that we as a town are going to keep it and we are going to uphold Lou's awesome vision, we need to hold off on demolishing any town-owned property, I think.
Linda, is your comment?
I will defer to Sally.
Oh, Sally. How are you, Sally, or Bob?
I'm going to try to speak to this.
Yeah?
I can. Having gone to a number of the historic, district Historic Committee meetings, it's been up for discussion. The issue is, I think, twofold. The first being that it actually detracts from the historic semblance of that building, and they would like to see that gone. Even if it's going to be put out for another use, maintaining it in its pure historic form is a much better plateau. And the second thing is, have you been inside of that garage? That's all I'm saying.
Linda?
A question I have is, if I, if I read these memos, the August 3rd, 2015 memo from Chris to Link in responding to another Lincoln email here, but it, if we don't have anybody who responds to the bid and takes away either of those pieces, then the DPW will knock it, take it down and demolish and take it away. Am I understanding that a town department, the DPW, is going to need to be paid to do some work on a town building? I'm, I'm a little confused on-
I-
That's a yes or a no?
No.
Okay, thank you.
What we would pay is the, the demolition material, the C and D. So we don't pay, we pay ABC, the company to do the-
So again, if we were going to knock down half of this building, we would still have to pay the C and D waste even though town employees came over and knocked down the building? But we would have to then have an article or something to pay the C and D waste?
It's to go somewhere.
It needs to go somewhere.
But it's going to our town transfer station.
Yeah, but then it has to go there.
It goes another step.
It goes to ABCC.
I understand, but I understand why we're having to pay for that. I just don't understand.
Oh, we pay by the ton.
I know we pay by the ton, Peter. I've seen this. We went from $37 and something cents to $75 and something cents. I got all that. But I don't understand why, if a town department is doing something on town property, it becomes a town expense as opposed to somehow paying for that. I, I just don't understand it.
Take it to-
You're nodding your head as if-
I see your point. I definitely see your point.
I don't understand it.
Take it to ABC, you have to pay the fee for them to take it.
And yet the-
Based on weight.
But if the town is making the decision, I understand that, Peter, but if the town is making the decision to knock down the garage-
Yeah.
I don't see why we should be then paying the town, someone out there, paying the town so it can go to the transfer station and then go wherever it goes.
No, no.
That's the part I don't get.
Linda, I think, I think you're caught in, in a trap. Anything that goes into our transfer station as damaged material, buildings knocked down, has to be picked up and has to be taken to-
ABC.
ABC. Now, when it goes to ABC, if it's somebody else doing it, they've already paid us, and we, and, and we give that money, or most of it, to ABC. The problem is, when this stuff goes there, ABC's going to want 70 bucks a ton for the stuff. So we don't have any other source for that $70. You can take it out of Link's budget, but it has, but it has to come out of someplace.
That makes, that's, I guess, the point I'm trying to make because town-owned building, town employees, I, I just, I'm not getting, I mean, yes, I understand if it goes to, once the stuff goes to somewhere. If I was knocking down my own house, which is privately owned, I can see I'd have to pay so many dollars per ton to bring it over, have it shipped over to the transfer station, et cetera. But that's town-owned property.
This is, once it leaves the transfer station, what you're paying for.
But I don't understand why we are soliciting the rest of the universe to pay for something that is going to be a town expense, period. Yes, there's a little bit, it comes out of Link's budget. Okay.
I think just because they volunteered, they created a gift account, so they're saying, hey, we really want this done. Here's some money, put it back into Link's budget.
It just sounds like we're tin cupping it out there.
I don't think it's tin cupping when people throw you money.
No, we're tin, we're tin cupping it.
Well, I think, you know, one of the obstacles was there was no money in the budget to account for the C and D waste, and someone stepped, some folk stepped forward and said, well, okay, we'll contribute that money.
I'm going to get a tin cup, and I'm going to put it right here with some pencils in it.
We're not going to put anything in it, but you can do that.
That's, that's-
The other side of it is, is someone comes along and says, you know, I could use that garage somewhere, and they come and they lift it up and move it, and-
That's great.
But make use of it, I don't know. Let's see, or that stuff on the side, whatever.
Is there any possibility that we can start to create, before we decide to demolish, that we can start to create a plan for this building? Whether we're going to keep it for five years? Even if we had a short-term plan, we know we're going to keep it for five years, so therefore, you know, it would make a little more sense. But if we don't even know what we're doing with it within the next two years, you know, it's hard to, to have a town building that doesn't even have Wi-Fi. You know, can't be moving departments over there and not have any Wi-Fi.
I'm willing to bet they can sit there and tap into the Wi-Fi in this building.
I would hope, I would hope it would be in the budget. We-
We're going to have to have the tin cup again.
They get it out of the office downstairs as an extender down there.
The other thing I want to point out is that the memo to Chris from Greg Winston is the chairman of the Historic Commission, actually endorsing the concept of getting rid of these two buildings, if you will. Point that out.
Just also, Mr. Chairman, administration has submitted plans for the reuse of the building, and there's been always requests for additional information, but the, the development plan or the use plan has to have that be a town hall annex that has elements of town operations in there. We do have not only the youth director in there, but we also have a, a helpline that, that also rents space from us. And there is actually a second entity that is looking to also go in there. Kind of a counseling center or a wellness center was the plan that we had put forth and administration has suggested, and the, the board did approve the, that license agreement with the, the helpline folks that are in there now. So we have submit, we have submitted materials, but I don't know if the board has coalesced around a certain direction to go forward or not.
Mr. Waystack?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Richard Waystack. Are either the doghouse or the garage deemed historic?
No.
They're not over 100 years old? Okay, thank you.
Not that I know of. Not that I know of.
No.
I'm not that old. Okay, what's your pleasure, board? Want to make a motion? Want us to be quiet? Questions? Go ahead.
Let me try this. The building a couple of months ago was there and was pretty ugly and needed painting. Somebody took the step of painting it and making most of it be his, painted in a historical manner. The Historic District Commission is saying there's two pieces there which aren't a big deal that are diminishing the historic value of that building. It's not going to rent or not rent on whether it has that piece or the other piece. It's basically costing us nothing, and I think a lot of people in town think it's a nice-looking building now and are enjoying it, and it adds to, it adds to Harwich Center. So I would move that we follow the advice of the Historic District Commission and knock, knock it down and paint the little spots and make it look really good, the way it's supposed to.
So is your motion, as it says here, to declare the following structures as surplus and offer for bid?
Yes. So moved.
There a second?
Second for a discussion.
Good. Moving seconded. Declare those two structures as surplus. Discussion.
You know, I could, I could support removing the addition on the east side for the reasons that were given. The garage, with an uncertainty in what we're going to do with that building, if, if we knock that garage down, somebody buys it, they'll never get a garage permit again. I think it adds some value to the building. I think it's, could be of some use, so, you know.
So amend it.
You can amend it, I'll accept it.
Okay.
I just want something to happen.
I move, we amend the motion not to include the detached garage.
So, so your amendment then is to-
Declare-
Remove detached garage in the rear from the main motion.
That is correct.
No problem.
No problem. So now we'll take it back to-
We have to vote on that?
Yeah, okay. We've got to vote on, we've got to vote on the amendment. So the amendment is to take out the detached, leave the garage in place, let's just put it that way. Okay? Any discussion on that? Alls in favor?
I, I can tell you that that garage is a dump. I mean, it's a mess in there.
Pre-existing, non-conforming.
Pre-existing, non-conforming, current-
Nightmare.
Nightmare.
Okay.
I have an idea.
Sally.
I have an idea. What if, because our Historic Commission is by charter given a certain amount of power. I don't know where that ends and yours begins, but what if we table this and have a confab between the two of you guys to kind of come up with an idea as to whether or not that should be demolished or kept? Because what we're doing is-
We can always bring that back. Let's just say, let's just say that this amendment, if you will, ends up with us just focusing on the addition, and we move forward getting rid of the addition. I'm just making this up. So we can always bring back the fact that the garage discussion can happen later. Is that, so then the historic group can get together or whatever and provide whatever information they want, and we can take that up again.
Okay.
Okay. So I was going to take a vote on the amendment. Everybody understands the amendment was to keep the garage intact. Let's put it that way. Alls in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
I got one on, to now?
I think if we, no.
Okay. You're an aye?
No.
You're a no? Okay. So that doesn't pass. So here we go. We're back to the main motion. The main motion is to deal with both the garage and the addition on the east side. That was moved and seconded. Is there further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, alls, is it clear what we're voting on? We're voting on the, the main motion, which was to include the, the garage and the addition on the east side of the Albra House to be declared surplus and put out the bid for removal or demolition.
Quick question before. When we're putting it out to bid, we're putting it out to bid to private parties who maybe are salvage dealers who are coming in and will actually pay us to remove that?
Could be.
Okay.
Could be, or they could say, I'll come in and I'll take it off your hands, and by the way, send me a check for 300 bucks. So they could come in and say, I'll take, you know, I'll move it and I'll give you $5, you know.
So there could be people who are going to bid and say, we'll pay you. There could be people that will say, there's no money involved whatsoever, we'll do this for you as a favor because we're going to recover the materials. And then there could be people who say, oh, no, this is going to cost you $1,000.
And the bid would be, the winning bid would be decided based on what's most favorable for the town.
Correct. I'd like to amend the motion then, that we do not offer it for bid, and we, if we are going to declare these structures as, as surplus, that we simply move ahead and demolish it ourselves with the $500 that was given to the gift account. I don't think we need to have this whole step of the bid. If, if we as a board are saying, you know what, okay, fine, it's surplus, the Historic Society or Historic Commission has said that we don't need these structures to, it will actually maybe increase the value of the property if we do get rid of them, let's just get rid of them. We've got the money.
How about we try something else?
Hang on one second, okay? This is called recycling at some point. So what you want to do is amend the motion now, right? And your amendment is just to demolish these two and not put it out to bid.
Correct.
Do it internally.
Yes.
Right? In other words, to have Lincoln Company tear down both structures and use the $500 or whatever it is to dispose of them.
Correct. Yes.
Okay, is there a second to that? Okay, no second. Let's move on. All right, next. Angelo, you have one here.
I, I was just saying, let's not get-
Back to the main motion, by the way.
Yeah, let's not get into the details, otherwise, you know, maybe we, we're too much, we're supposed to be dealing with policy. We should really be saying, yes, they're surplus, get them out of there for the least amount of money for the town.
Hey, if someone can use them, use the materials, you know? Let's have at it.
Yeah. That's-
All right, so the main motion is to declare these two structures surplus and offer them for bid. That's both of them. Further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. Alls in favor, say aye. I guess I'll go individually just to see.
Aye.
Angelo?
Aye.
No.
No.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Okay. Chris, you got that?
Difficult.
Yes. That's okay, that was a good discussion. That was a good discussion. Okay, now we're on the-
I can't wait till we do the budget.
Huh?
I can't wait till we do the budget.
There you go. Now, now we're on to wastewater educational moment.
I'm all about efficiency.
Wastewater educational moment, and I think everybody should be aware that, and by, by the way, for, for the water folks, we've been having a great time trying to educate the public on what this whole plan is about and getting people excited and whatnot. So every week, we try and put something up here. Sometimes it's a little different than others. This is, this is Figure 13 something, I can't read it, out of the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, and it shows the sections of town that would be sewed. But the main intent I want to show here is that when you look at East Harwich, whoops, I, I want to be able to see Pleasant Bay, so back us out a little bit, if we can. Can you come back out a little bit? I know you're working there. There you go, that's good, that's good. When we look at Pleasant Bay, which by the way, cleaning up or protecting Pleasant Bay is our first target, if you will, refresh everybody's memory that we're, we're working on a, a new bridge at, at Muddy Creek to open up the flow between Pleasant Bay in and out of Muddy Creek. To get some flushing, which will hopefully improve the nitrogen situation, if you will. And that in East Harwich, which is this chunk here in violet, I guess I'll call it, which is intended, or the plan at the moment is, this area to be sewed and that sewage to be sent to the existing Chatham Treatment Facility. I think we all know, or refresh people's memory, that Angelo and Michael are working as a, as a subcommittee basically to negotiate with the town of Chatham as to how and at what cost, if you will, and under what terms and conditions, they would accept up to 300, I think it's 30,000 gallons a day eventually, out of the East Harwich system to come to Chatham. Discussion last year was, was coming up with a recharge site. Once Chatham processes the sewage, and it basically comes out as pretty darn good clear water, it has to go somewhere. You've got to put it back in the ground. Right now, Chatham does it at their existing, I call them litter boxes, they're filter beds, sand pits basically that sit at the Chatham Treatment Facility. And the effluent from that eventually ends up down in Cockle Cove. And what's going on now is, there hasn't been enough time and enough volume for Chatham to know and the state DEP to know what, if any, issues are with Cockle Cove with that, that effluent or discharge flowing down there. Chatham, if I remember correctly, is running at about 140,000 gallons a day of, of plant, where their capacity is something like 1.3 million at the moment gallons per day. So that's what we're talking about in, in Harwich. Our, our discussions with Chatham have said, okay, Chatham will take our waste without Harwich having a discharge site, but if they need one, because of what goes on or, or what they see for test results or readings down in, in Cockle Cove, Harwich needs to be able to have a site that can be used at some point in time. Pick a timeframe, two to five years, I guess I would say, as a backup in case that's necessary. So that's what all that discussion is about. The early term focus, the next several years, will be on this area and what we do here in relationship or in conjunction with Chatham. The rest of the town, you know, the, the Water Commissioners talked and particularly Allen talked eloquently about the need to do things down here for the water system. As far as sewage goes, it's not going to happen for, you know, many, many phases out, if you will. And that's when we get, we, Harwich, end up with our own sewage treatment facility in the vicinity of the landfill site. We had the land there to do it, so... And at this point, that's all I wanted to say on tonight's educational moment for waterways. I think next week we'll have some information on potential new discharge sites, right?
Yes.
We'll talk about that next week. Okay? Thank you. Okay, next topic is potential reuse of West Harwich School. The reason this is on the agenda is, there's been, there's been some talk and a lot of work done in West Harwich having to do with, I guess I'd just call it, because it's been out there in the paper and talked about Captain's Row, which is along 28 from, I guess I'd just say the, the Herring River to the Dennis Line. There's been some talk about some potential reuse, if you will, of the West Harwich School Building. And before that gets too far along, I think this board needs to just have a discussion about how we see that process going forward. In my mind, we can't just say here, "Have a town building. Have fun." There's got to be a process put in place that says, "Okay, if you want to do something, you know, should we put, you know, put a proposal out or put a bid out there that says, 'Okay, who's got ideas? Who wants to use it? Does the town want to retain it? Do we want to lease it? Do we want to try and sell it? You know, what do we do? Is the town owned building and we need to figure it out." The good news is there are folks out there that want to try and do something to the building or with the building. It's been sitting, I think, as most people know, idle for a number of years and in sort of a state of disrepair for a number of years, so that's what's going on here. So I don't know what the board would like to do with this topic or how they'd like to proceed. That's really the question.
I think it's a great idea that has been presented. And being that it's the only idea that's been presented in how long? Decades?
No.
No.
25?
That's not, that's not true.
No, no, no.
No?
2008 was the study that was done.
Yeah. There was a study done and they were, an RFP put out and nobody particularly wants it for a whole host of reasons.
We also haven't asked anybody lately if they want it. I mean, that's, that's part of the question that we need to deal with tonight.
There was, but one of the RFPs was for housing and it was both at the old rec building and at the West Harwich School Site. And it didn't go through. So there had been, there was also another individual, three, four years ago, who came forward with a potential, I think it was a studio slash school in the arts area. But that did not, also, he did not go forward. So there has been some modest interest that have not really moved forward. So there has been interest.
So perhaps what this board would need to do is, I don't know if a committee would be needed, but perhaps a committee would be needed to siphon through any RFPs if we put it out to the public for proposals to come in and siphon through them? Is that the general process? Or are we as a board able to say, "Okay, we like this one. We're going to do it?"
Well, I think you have to be careful, in my opinion, and that is that, you know, there is, there is, I won't say a proposal, but there is a, you know, a concept here, if you will, that is trying to move forward. The question is, do you let other people have the same opportunity with the same facility, the West Harwich School Building, to see if they have some ideas or money or, you know, whatever?
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
Put it, put it out to the general public so other people can come, right?
That's the process I would see, because otherwise, you know, it could be said that we're not being fair about it. We're not giving other people an opportunity. Gee, I had a great idea, but you didn't listen to me and you gave me a chance to do it, so...
My actual real question is, does a committee need to be formed? Or is it the Board of Selectmen can siphon through the RFPs that do come in?
I think that the purview of this board is to say we want to do an RFP, to put it, put out an RFP for potential uses of that building. And then based on what comes back, we could decide we either want to put a little group together to evaluate them, if you will, make a recommendation, or we could do that ourselves, or whatever. It's all possible. Angelo?
Can I ask a question? There, there apparently is a committee in West Harwich of residents who are looking at a number of the various houses, including this building. Would it be appropriate to talk to that committee and have them do the RFP and do the various steps? Because I think they are looking forward to getting some method where they can support changing a lot of the old captains' houses, bring them up to date. And I think it'd be a nice structure. Now, we've done it with the, the school, church, rather.
South Harwich Meeting House.
South Harwich Meeting House. That's, that's the approach we followed. And I know they're still working on, on that, but they, they've made a lot of progress. Is that the form that we should be using for this one? Because what, what it basically says here is the groups knows they need money. They want to go to this, you know, CPC and raise funds, et cetera, et cetera. I, I don't know if you want to do it that way either. But I, I have a, that's one question. The second question is, we've heard a lot about Brooks Library and funds that they're going to need to do things immediately. And if anything, if it's coming at a CPC, my guess is we have to focus on Brooks Library rather than, than this project. So maybe this project really has to be postponed for a period of time.
Lyndon?
Well, we don't have any say in what CPC does or does not support. I mean, as a committee, they have the ability to take in any and all requests and proposals and then the committee decides which ones they will fund, how much they will fund and what they will pull forth. So, I mean, to say that what, to make it a statement from here that the library is going, should have more cachet or have more support, that's really not in our purview. So that's really going to be CPC making that decision.
They make the decision whether they want to give them money. We make the decision of which project we're going to support.
We do, but, but they're the ones who put forward an article from CPC. We cannot.
Well, you also don't know, quite frankly, you know, with the library, for instance, you know, the focus could be just dealing with the columns in the front. And I'm making this up, you know, $82,000, $48,000 is the number is and not taking on the whole project, you know, at once. I would hope, hope they do it in stages, if you will, or at least request to do it in stages, so... Lyndon?
The South Harwich Meeting House, because that started before I think I got here or around the time that I moved to town. It's been a while. But that's a lease arrange, a license arrangement with the Board of Selectmen. And I don't believe that went out to bid, did it? I don't, I don't recall that in its history that it went out to bid. I thought that they, a group of people came forward with a proposal, gave them the license to renovate the building and they have raised money. They've got some CPC funds, et cetera, and they're moving along their project. I don't remember bids to different groups. Leo, is that correct or am I...
I was just actually talking with Carolyn about that because my recollection, I was on that original board that came in front of the Selectmen and got a licensing agreement.
Okay.
And I believe we responded to a request for information or a request for interest. I'm only familiar with the Chapter 30 procurement laws with requests for proposals and requests for quotes, but I believe there's another one in there that you can use that, that tells the public that you, the Board of Selectmen, are in control of this property and you're looking to do something with it. There was a formal thing that we answered and, and that, that's why I was waiting because I was going to suggest that you do the same thing.
Yep.
You know, it works so well at the church with the group that took, took that and has a licensing agreement with you, that I think this mirrors that. And basically, it really, it gives them a lot what they want and, and takes it off of your books because they can raise money and, and take their time rebuilding the building. So I, I would suggest that you maybe look at that. And I know Chris is frowning too. I know, I think this request for information is RFI.
Yep.
But I, I, I'm not sure. I'd have to go back and look because I know there was something that we did.
Something of this value would be, it's, it would be an RFP process is what the process would be.
I think that...
We'll figure out the process.
That's why I was asking, Leo, because...
There was something that we answered because Michael Ford was involved and, and I know that, you know, he was an attorney and plus we had the town's attorney and we wanted to make sure it was really done right.
Well, the proposal in their case was to get a license.
Right. A licensing agreement.
That was a proposal.
As opposed to a lease.
As opposed to...
We didn't want a lease because a lease had to be, a, a long-term lease had to go in front of town meeting and be approved because it's actually a transfer of ownership, if you will.
Yep, exactly.
When you're a leasing, as opposed to a licensee.
Right.
So that's why we use the licensing part of it.
Yeah.
There's ways of doing it anyhow, and I know Chris will, will figure it out the right way.
Mr. Waystack, do you have a comment on this one?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, and I think you start with, are you going to declare the building surplus? You know, you had a plan, whether it was funded or not in the capital plan, to demolish a couple of buildings. And that's what started a lot of these discussions coming up. And so now if you're going to declare the building surplus, I believe you already have a disposition policy in place for the town for disposition of public buildings. And if that's the case, you should probably take a look at that policy that you have to follow that. And I think Mr. Kakounis is correct that if you're going to have other groups that might have interest in this particular parcel, that you do an RFI. That was a process that was done in the school. An RFI went out before an RFP went out and see if there's other interest out there. And bottom line is look at proposals. I'm tickled to see that people are interested in this building. That's been there and it's still a good, solid building. If you haven't had a chance to tour it, please do. But if there's a use for it and if it's going to be declared surplus, then look at other interests and decide of the number of proposals hopefully that you'll receive, what proposal is in the best interest of this community. So I'd encourage you to look at your own policy and this disposition. And really, I think you have to need to decide first, are you going to declare the building surplus?
Now, we have the policy in our packet, Richard. I was just looking at it.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. The reason why I really got up the first time too was I wanted to enlighten some of the new members of the board that one of the reasons why a housing development did not go forward on that piece of property because the piece of property does have a DEP contamination on the site and they were unable to get funding until that contamination is, is mitigated. So to go through a process of an RFP and try to find someone to purchase it, that situation still lingers out there. And I, and that's why I strongly think that the licensing agreement is the way to go.
Just, Mr. Chairman, one thing in the proposal under the governance, it does say that they're interested in having the Historic Commission maintain use of the property. So we wouldn't be declaring it necessarily surplus if it was to be retained by a town entity for town use. So I just, that was one of the elements that was in there. I just want to make sure the board was aware.
What's the board's pleasure?
What did you say?
I said, "What's the board's pleasure? What would you like to do?"
I think, I think we maybe have to send Sally and Lou back to the drawing board as far as verbiage, correct? And have them come back with a proposal for, like what Leo said, with the licensee, being a licensee?
No, I think, I think before we do that, to be fair to everybody, we have to put out something that says...
The RFI.
That says that we are going to entertain.
Yes.
Call it proposals or, you know...
Can we do that just with an RFI?
Why not?
Oh, I think, I think...
Well, I...
Isn't the RFI is anybody interested and they don't have to put in full proposals?
Correct.
It's when you put out the RFP that someone says, "I will do this and I will give you $500,000 for the building, et cetera, et cetera." So I, I think...
That's correct.
The RFI is just, is asking if they're, who's interested to see if there's any even value to putting out an RFP.
So skip that? Because obviously there's value. We have...
Well, what if, what if six people say they have interest?
And we have to explore.
And then from that, and then from that, you put on RFP and three people have interest at that point in time because they actually want to get serious and do something with it. The thing we don't want to do is deny people access to, you know, put in some kind of proposal for it, that's all.
Question, how quickly can, if, if we wanted to go that route, how quickly can we do, put out an RFI, get in from, get those expressions of interest back in here? If there are sufficient, then turn around with an RFP because on October 1st is the deadline for CPC applications. And all of this isn't going to happen. I think today's the 14th. This isn't going to happen by October 1st. So it, it, it sounds like perhaps they could still put in their CPC application.
Sure.
And if it doesn't go through, then CPC just doesn't...
Yeah. Their application would be subject to...
Subject to all of this happening.
Coming in terms of the license with the agreement with the town, something like that.
Do we have to do the RFI or can we just go right to RFP?
Not a bad idea either, just to go to the RFP.
Leo?
Mr. Chairman, again, I don't have the law in front of me, but I really don't believe the RFP is the process that you would want to use because the RFP has structure within state statute which prohibits you from taking what you may feel is the best proposal. I mean, it's, and I know, Chris, you know this, it has, it has a rating system built in to the actual state statute. I, I believe, and I think maybe this evening you should just maybe take action to give Chris the authority to proceed in whatever is the correct manner in order to end up with a licensing agreement. Because I think, not positive, but I believe you can, as the Board of Selectmen, can go into a licensing agreement under an RFI. You do not have to go out for an RFP because you're not actually transferring ownership. You're not actually transferring any legal value. You're not, you're not even renting it to them. You're, you're, you're just having this agreement that, that they're going to raise money and fix it under your standards. So, and, and again, I'm not positive. That's why I suggest that maybe the motion should just say that you instruct your administrator to identify the correct method. Because if you guys vote tonight, RFP, and Chris comes back and it's another week we lose to it. He says, "You know something, we can go out for an RFQ or an RFI." I don't know.
Yeah, no, you know, in the, in the bid law, there, there's two. And Leo makes a good point. An RFP allows for you to determine the, the value based upon other criteria other than money. So first you make a value judgment as to whether it's something that you want to pursue a, a certain use. And then you look at the money piece. The other one is called the invitation for bid, where you say, "This is what I want," and then the highest bidder gets it. So those are the two processes. He, he has me a little intrigued because if there was some legal work done, you know, on the South Harwich Meeting House, I'd need to kind of look at what the, the history was on that because now when you get into licensing agreements, you're not necessarily doing procurement the same way that you traditionally do it. So I would like to look at that because I'm just not familiar with that process. I haven't been here.
Give Michael Ford a call?
Yeah, absolutely. We, I'm sure we have a file that has the process so we can, I can dig it up.
It's, you know, the, the point here is it's not up to us to sit here and predetermine what ideas people have for using this building. You know, it, it's our job, I think, to say, "Okay, this building is available, available for use. We would like to see it restored and put to use. Now who's got ideas and what sort of funding do they have to make it happen?" So that's, I think that's what we're looking for.
Peter, the only thing I would ask of Chris is that as you go forward with that, remember that there's a group out there that wants to do the same kind of thing with some of the buildings along 28 in West Harwich. So if, if you're, when you're doing something, understand we may have to take it another step.
Except this is the one building...
That we own.
This is the one building we own.
But that's...
Whatever they want to do with privately owned buildings.
But I also think that they can proceed with their CPC application, Sally. Proceed with your CPC application and be subject to, you know, getting a license from the town to use the building. I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't stop that. Now, they won't. Unless you have a license in place, I don't think they'd fund you. But, you know, you've got between now and town meeting to get that figured out, so...
Mr. Chairman?
But this way, this way, anybody who's got an idea then, you know, can bring it forward and we can...
Mr. Chairman, I just, I'm perfectly content that, you know, if, if a group wants to put it forward. I think it should be a joint application though, before CPC, that it would also be the Historic Commission. The one thing I, I would like to recommend that, I think CPC has at least a couple of meetings that I've attended, would like to make sure that the money that gets allocated to something is used in expeditious manner. And I think in this case that if there was an application that was submitted, I personally think it would make more sense to turn the renovation project over to town engineer to have him proceed to do that. And I think the application is based upon the 2008 study of what needs to be done to renovate the property, which was something that was directed by this board to go out and do. So the scope of the work, so I, I would like to just at least encourage that there be a joint application, whether it's through town administration, through the town engineer, or through Historic, or some combination. So that way, if there was an award of a certain amount of money, that we could do that project in an expeditious manner through the in-house resources that we have available to us.
Again, that, that would be the purview of the people making the application, but I think that they would probably take that.
Brooke Williams?
Here. Just a couple of quick...
Just a couple of quick points, which I think maybe have helped. In regard to the South Harwich Church, after purchasing the church, which was done by town meeting, the next step the town did, Mr. Hughes may remember, was, in fact, the town repaired the roof of the South Harwich Church. So this is prior to the RFP or RFI process. I believe there was a RFI, an RFP process, in which the Friends of the South Harwich came forward, and they indicated their interest in that particular building. It was the same time, there was also a process going on for West Harwich and Harwich Center. And those projects did not forward in the same way. And so then the negotiation proceeded. I think, and I think there are many fine things in the proposal that have been forwarded in regard to the CPC. In my, having attended a number of their meetings in the past, I would suggest that, as mentioned by Mr. Clark, the notion of having the Historic Commission perhaps apply to the CPC and finding within the work of scope that had been looked at before, things that are needed right away or the most prioritized. And there's also another study, which the Selectmen should look at, done by Coastal Engineering, I think it was around 2000, 2001, which prioritized the roof repair. That was what they felt was important then. I think it's still important now. But it is a well-built building by the Kelly Company of Harwich Port was the contractors. And Duncan Berry has a lot of additional information, which is very good in terms of the structure. But I also feel some sort of a public process is helpful to complement for what has been mentioned. In 2004, there was an open house in conjunction with the Historic Commission and the Harwich Conservation Trust and the Museum of Natural History and the Audubon Society. Not with the notion of their essentially being the tenant or the licensee, but they had interest in the Belznek area, in that Herring River area. And so they might be able to complement the efforts with the Captain's Rose and therefore also with their supporters and benefactors and so forth, provide additional resources. So I think that would help in terms of the process between now and town meeting, demonstrating community-wide support and so forth, which I think would help, you know, in having the things approved, both by the CPC and, of course, by town meeting, which would be necessary to have those things. But I think those are just a couple of points. And then the other thing, currently, I'm working on looking at the other schoolhouses on the Cape and interest, issues of like insurance and in terms of the, how the different depart, they work with the different departments. The West Dennis Grade School is actually, falls under, they have a group that manages it, but they work with the DPW and Historic Commission. So it's not a single commission, but they're working with them. And they work with, like, the Garden Club of Dennis and so forth on the grounds. And this is how they work towards that. So getting that information, so that there's, that's available as well.
Thank you.
I'd like to be clear about my opinion. I think if there's a public group that's interested in working on that building, interested in figuring out how to make it work, how to fix it, how to get the money, and how to get the operating funds, I think we should give them all the support we can. If they're asking us to, after 20 years, spend money this year or next year or whatever from our taxpayers to deal with it, I don't think we should go forward. It's been 20 some odd years that that building's sitting there. And we have a lot of things to do with the cash.
Okay, just be clear, one thing, CPC or CPA money is our money.
But it's also-
I mean, it goes out of your pocket, so.
That's also-
Just so you know.
But it's already there.
Yeah, I know.
It's different.
I know, I understand, but it's still taxed.
I know.
It's still taxed. But it will be spent on something, so why not spend it on something worthwhile?
That's right. I'm fine with that.
Okay. Chris, you want to, do you want to talk to a legal counsel and check out the best way to go forward?
Sure.
So you want to- I want your rampages, we just have to wait till next Monday. But I think we should be on firm ground with, you know, how to proceed with this. I think the intent is to certainly entertain at some point this proposal and encourage it to get, you know, see if we can get funded through CPC. And also invite other people or other interested or out there to see if, you know, somebody else has an idea as well. So the intent is to put that building in use, quite frankly, so, okay? So we'll put that on the agenda for next week. And that gets us to the Town Administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will make these kind of straightforward. On legal costs, I think at a couple of meetings ago, there was a request to get a sense for what the legal costs are. We did get the information from Coltman and Page. Coltman and Page is probably well over 50, well, probably closer to 75% of our total spending. So I did put in the package. I think in the past, we've done kind of summaries of the different legal cases, too. I think that Attorney Giorgio provides kind of a overview at least once a year in terms of kind of linking that up. So just that information, it is what it is. Also, the fire chief had requested that there be a study group to look at some of the issues relative to East Harwich. So I just wanted to kind of report that to the board, that he is looking at that. I think that was one of the items that we had in his goals and objectives, to look at East Harwich. So that, that group is my intent to get them started and have them do some work in that area. And obviously, anything that comes out of that gets reported back to the board. Also, on item C here, we, I have received a request from Dave Requena, our new building commissioner. And he has expressed a concern that the budget was built with two part-time building inspectors. They come in on different days, and there's some lack of continuity for how we do the building operation. So he has come in and asked to have the two part-time positions merged into a full-time position and to advertise that. He has it right now with his sufficient funds to cover the cost from those two part-time into the full-time position. He has the salary covered, probably not all the indirect, not indirect costs, but the overhead costs. So I would say, you know, we do hire some of these positions, and sometimes people come with insurance, and sometimes they don't. I think in this case, operationally, he's really kind of struggling, and I would like to move forward with that, allowing him to do it as a really no cost, other than the insurance component. I think the board had asked me to report when I was going to pursue doing things like that. So hence the bringing that up.
So, Chris, could you just, when you get ready to do this, give us the full cost it's going to take? In other words, put the overhead, the benefits in there, in addition to the hourly rate, and build it into a year, you know, annual number, please? Angelo?
Yeah, the other, same kind of question. How many hours were the part-timers working? Did they get benefits?
No.
So if they didn't get benefits-
So they were both, they were both under, they were both 19 or less.
Okay, so what you're adding is 35 or 40% to that.
Correct, but-
So it'd be nice, when we're dealing with numbers like this, that we actually had the numbers?
Yeah.
Because this is-
You don't have the numbers.
Conceptually, this is fine, but let's take a look at the numbers.
Okay. I will, I'll ask him to update the material that he had on the package. We'll get that to you.
I would also, quite frankly, put in there, you know, he's got a revenue piece of this, which is building permit fees. And the good news is-
He's probably covering-
With this activity, no, with this activity is growth, right? And beyond two and a half, the only we got left is growth, so this is certainly contributing to growth.
So it would be good when these analyses are done, exactly that, Angelo. There's a revenue piece, there's a direct cost piece, there's the indirect cost piece, which are the benefits, that you really need to have a full analysis so that we can actually have the information in order to support something or not.
Okay. Obviously, I'm working with a lot of different department heads, so I try to get them to put these things together. On the withdrawal of, we had received a letter from the church on the use of the Bank Street Station and as a result of the St. Mary of Magna La Church. We did formally receive a letter withdrawing their proposal that was dated back in June for the reuse of the Bank Street Station. So that was just a follow-up item for the board that that had occurred. And then, actually, tomorrow, I talked to Sean Libby and Bob Cafarelli. Sean Libby, the Facility Maintenance Director, and Bob Cafarelli, the Town Engineer. They are going to look at the columns at the library to actually do a more onsite inspection to get a better sense for that. So at least what's been reported so far to me, we believe that there is a column underneath that is probably intact. And really, the only part that is showing signs of, I don't want to use the word failure, but showing signs of wear and tear is the facade around that column. So the column itself, I believe that even more today. Bob Cafarelli had said that there is a, not a foundation, a sonnet tube, a footing that's underneath that. And he said that the footing appeared to be fairly new. So I think that we're going to get a good report, that that's not, it's probably more aesthetic than safety, is what I'm hoping to get, but we'll get a better sense tomorrow. And on the Assistant Town Administrator's search, we have, I've been meeting with some of the top candidates. I have one of those coming up. And then I do plan on presenting a name to the board, hopefully in the next week or two.
Okay, thank you.
And that concludes my report this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Questions to the Town Administrator, Michael, do you-
Chris, you're going to give me the other part of that legal report?
Yeah, actually, the additional legal material, Leo Peliquin's firm, we'll get that. And then there are two other firms that we have. I think the numbers are fairly small, but we can get you just a total. And that's Blatman, Bresk, and Mead. And then, I can't remember, I can't think of the other firm that we use. But we'll get those other ones.
And Chris, just, I think a couple of weeks ago, you brought us a letter from Coltman and Page, I think advising us that they're raising their rate by $5 an hour.
Yes.
Yeah, is that, did we vote that? I can't remember.
Actually, this was what, that discussion prompted the request for additional info. So, you know, obviously, the recommendation I made then is I think Coltman and Page does do a good job for us and that we should probably approve the, their request for the $5 more.
Okay, why don't we put that on next week's agenda, just since it's not on here now?
Okay.
Put it as a discussion and vote, potential vote, okay? Any else for Chris?
No, I'll say, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Janelle, you want to update us on your educational situation?
Yes, and I have a couple of other things, too.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
So my, the class that I was, so-
You were going to be at tonight?
Yeah, I was going to be at tonight, ended up not running, because I didn't have enough enrollment, which was a real bummer for me. But in case you guys don't know this, maybe some of the audience does, today is the birthday of Harwich. And 1694, September 14th, Harwich was incorporated. So I think that that's something that we should say as Selectmen, happy birthday, Harwich.
How many years ago?
Three, two, one.
There you go.
Three, two, one, which was kind of a neat number, too. And then the other thing I wanted to say was, today, tonight, my daughter's Girl Scout troop served dinner to the seniors at the community center. And it was wonderful to go and see these fourth grade girls go over and volunteer and pour coffee and serve the chicken. And they actually got to sit and eat with the seniors as well, and it was a really great experience. I saw, oh, Peg there. And-
I brought my father.
Yes, I saw you, yeah. So I hope you, I hope you can vouch for their professionalism as nine-year-olds.
I said, very old, David, in regard to, gee, Rick Clark, it should be up there recruiting.
Yeah, right? And that's all.
Okay, Mike?
I have nothing.
Angelo? Linda? You're on vacation, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we're done. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.